Good evening, Mr. Scotty, President Ryan, and members of the board. It is my honor to come before you this evening and present a few of our amazing students from Highland Forest. Tonight, Miss Thompson and I applaud several students from Highland Forest. They are Rachel and Gina Marilla, Caesar and Julio Torre, Ethan and Kevin Gollit, Gabriela Wilson, and Lucy Garcia. Addison Monk will also be showcasing her artwork.
In allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prometo dejar a la manera de los Estados Unidos de América y a la virtudita que representa una nación ante Dios, invisible con libertad y justicia para todos.
Amen. Texas pride, our country, we choose Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Hola a la manera de Texas, te prometo dejar a ti Texas, un estado ante Dios, único e invisible.
Please stop your heads for a vote of prayer.
Por favor, inclinen su voz para el momento de oración.
Dear Lord Jesus.
Sí, Dios es nuestro Jesús.
Thank you for our faculty, teachers, and friends.
Gracias por nuestra familia, nuestros amigos.
Thank you for everyone here tonight.
Gracias por todos los que están aquí esta noche.
Thank you for your faith in helping us with the challenges success we face and moving safely into summer.
Gracias por ser quien en ayudarnos a terminar otro exitoso año escolar a través de la voluntad a lo largo del camino.
We ask for Wisco to continue walking in love, peace, and unity in all that we do.
Venimos a vivir para ser dignos en amor, paz, y unidad, y en todo lo que hace.
Please keep us healthy and safe.
Por favor, nos vamos en buena salud y asalto.
Que los que estén en vuestro entorno sean buenos.
Vamos a fuerza y la clase para continuar agradeciendo a todos los que están ahí.
In Jesus' name, and then know that I am His. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated and enjoy the performance.
Today was the celebration of Dream Team, an American holiday that celebrates the announcement of the end of slavery in the U.S. State of Texas on June 19, 1860.
Today, we would like to sing a song titled "Celebration of Dream Team." The day that brought this song to the heart of our tradition, celebrating the holiday in the U.S. of America.
We stand here on the brink of history, life is a mystery, hope is all. We know we have the right to live, don't have to just survive, we can do it all. We want people who have the heart to be living together in harmony, finding a way to be Raching out to the people in everywhere, trying to give them everything and showing how we can be. We have all of our lives to follow our rainbow. We have the right to reach for the dreams that we dream. We are freedom, we are freedom, we are freedom, we are freedom. We have all of our lives to follow our rainbow. We have the right to reach for the dreams that we dream. We have all of our lives to follow our rainbow. We have the right to reach for the dreams that we dream. We are free. We are free. We are free.
My heart always desires to hear those around me. I trust to be a teacher because they look for students who are similar in all the core aspects. I think they don't like learning, and it can sometimes be difficult to learn alone. But my teachers are always there to help me, to let me succeed. They care about my future. The older of the teachers, the younger of them, they're around me. And he, he will have one of my best friends, for which, para ellos, sus amigos son mi hermano, y harán cualquier cosa por ellos. Estoy, estoy en una clase de lengua nueva, y puede a veces ser difícil aprender un nuevo idioma, pero mis maestras siempre están ahí para ayudarme. Ellos quieren, quieren que yo tenga éxito. Ellos siempre say, "The impact that I need to do."
Wow, they did an amazing, amazing job. I'm so proud of them. Um, here at the end of these students, please stand to be recognized. Thank you so much for letting us teach your children. If you have any Highland Forest staff in your meeting room console to organize this wonderful performance, please stand to be recognized. Okay, so we have a little treat for everybody, so that they have the kids come up here and they'll pass it out. Um, we thank you so much for allowing us to perform, we all appreciate it, and we hope you have a great summer.
I wanted to say something about kids. I've spent a lot of my life, you know, with it. I haven't really struggled with these kids, but I've done it. I don't practice it enough. Uh, I had to learn on my own. But it is truly a gift that these kids are receiving, because they have better prepared for the world, and they're going to do it all, as a community. That's, I don't know if you, uh, I don't know what I'm saying. So, I didn't say it, I didn't laugh in the room, I didn't laugh, but, uh, I didn't want to say that, uh, for old men out there, having spoken Spanish all my life. I can't keep up with kids, we're not ready. All right, um, we have a couple of awards to give out, so if you're all prepared for key moments, I promise to soon to present the awards to attend recess, and let everybody get home to continue their summer. Seriously, we are very honored to recognize a few of our employees, a couple of posts from our benefits office, as well as two teachers from the high school, which has done some exceptional work, and we want them to be proudly represented in front of their colleagues and in front of our community, and in front of their parents and families. So, it's cold.
Thank you, Mr. Scotty, evening, um, Mr. Ryan and the board. Uh, tonight, we would like to recognize Mr. Vincent Prasenio, who will come up. Vincent Prasenio is being recognized by East Central High School for embodying the district's dominance of adaptability, loyalty, and teamwork. Mr. Prasenio has been a math teacher at East Central for the past six years. He routinely has participated in our 6:30, 8:00 a.m. funding, learning, and administrative meetings, completed his educational administration internship at the high school, undertaking campus-level projects, and has volunteered for numerous campuses and district recipients. This year, he stepped up in a enormous way during his spring semester. Due to unforeseen circumstances, he was called upon to throw a void, and was asked to step up and lead the learning academy and sub-campus at East Central High School until the end of the year. Although he was still teaching, also expending math classes, his immediate response was still being coached, alderably, doing the job done. This level of commitment places others around him in, um, verified air. Vincent's willingness to step into the fray regardless of the personal cost demonstrated his deep loyalty to East Central ISB. Mr. Prasenio embodied adaptability, and his relentless effort to learn and grow, ask questions, and address his role while continuously adapting to the needs of all students and students at the sub-campus. He personally was responsible for supporting, coaching, leading, and mentoring 56 at this learning academy's students to meet their goal in graduate this year. Lastly, Vincent Prasenio demonstrated teamwork by his unwavering altruistic nature. He truly demonstrated his willingness to serve his core others regardless of the cost, and was the ultimate teammate. He carried away this role like a true champion, and is a role model for all others to live by. And he, Mr. Prasenio, was eternally grateful to be through service at East Central ISB. This award is nominated by Mr. King High School Administration for its strong loyalty and teamwork. Um, for the family of Mr. Prasenio, we stand that we be recognized also because of his Next up, we would like to call, uh, Darlene Lavelle and Deborah Corero. These ladies work in our benefits office. There is a miss. So, the world of insurance and benefits is very complex for our students. Add to that the financial and emotional burden that often has with employees having to actually file complaints, or make appointments, and even have a difficult situation. It takes a very special person to deliver customer service in a way that balances the rules while assisting in their, in a very personal experience to be employed. At East Central ISB, we are very beyond rest to have two very special ladies, Darlene Lavelle and Deborah Corero, serving the magic body. Darlene and Deborah go above and beyond to take their life's joys in any way possible. I wish time to time again, their focus on the employees as if they were their own family. This comes from a genuine place of compassion to helping employees. I see them exercise patience and control in the most difficult situations. They diligently honor employees' confidentiality at all times. They never complain, and are always looking to do what it takes to get the job done. Darlene and Deborah are very guiding members of the East Central, and we're very worship and gratitude with them, and these two ladies were nominated by Shannon Burns and our results. If any family members wants to stand to be recognized. I'll speak my praise in this. Next, we would like to call, uh, Mr. Forrest Hawthorne. He is the East Central Electricon, um, sponsor. He teaches, uh, the third syllabus of technology at the high school, and the students in his class built from the ground up an electric cog as their performance assessment. They entered races as the co-main event. Now, instead of me talking about it, Channel 4 actually has a little note used, segment on them, it's on the play that, so you can see all this great work.
And now, good six high school students from all over the area built these battery-powered cars for an energy endurance race. This is called the Third Annual Animal City Electricon Races at Troyers Village on the South Side.
After passing inspections, each person built vehicle took to the track for a chance at the crown, or took galling as a story.
A whole year's work, putting to one race.
We are proud to have area high school participants.
Both the high school students in their STEM programs use their vehicles to build these good acid battery-powered cars.
Started as just five teams, four years ago, we are now seventeen hundred and eighty.
Students find who need self-built electric cars for a chance at taking down the juggernaut. East Central High School. If you're wired to sophomore, East Central High School loves defending the crown. This high school has won the race for past two years. However, this race is not about speed, it's about endurance.
We test our cars as much as possible, we need our drivers familiar with them.
And includes time to change, both engines speed checks for each race. Each vehicle only has 1,000 watt-hours of electricity for the hour-long race. One important lesson wired to its size, radiation, and weather will steam up.
I want to continue on that line.
Joe Calley, Newscores, San Antonio.
This race is now one of just twelve national sanctions, Electricon, and events in the nation, and the third straight here, by the way, East Central High School.
So, thank you, Mr. Hawthorne, for everything you do for our kids. We appreciate you very much. Family, important. Can we hear what the names of the cars are, or do they have names?
Electric Hornet and Plan B.
All right, so we're going to take the ten-minute recess, and come back at seven o'clock straight up, so that you all can get off into your professional, take your. Next, we're going to have a conference, we're going to have a conference, move on to the public hearing, with the optional flexible school day program. Yes, sir, just these, this is a program that we're very proud of, being named a thing here. You know, I try and pack it, this is the entire program before the beginning of page nine, like all of our different points and topics. But just wanted to remind, uh, the board that, you know, it's never where our kids start, you know, our school system, it's always about, I mean, and you know that kids enter into our school system from a wide range of circumstances, and a wide range of degrees of readiness. And it's our job to provide the highest quality opportunities for every one of them, but in addition, that provide multiple layers of support, so that they can thrive throughout the system. For some kids, it takes a lot longer, it takes a lot more time, and the optional flexible school day program is just that, this is a program near the end of the process, as they get into the hospital. To ensure the kids have a flexible set of options, they are customizable to meet their various specific needs, and so, this program for more than the day, it's the name, is to serve children who are teen parents, who are homeless, who have dealt with significant trauma, who are substantially derailed from being able to earn a school diploma, and we're very, very proud of the advisors we've been able to work with and get across that finish line and earn potential. Very proud of the staff to be engaged in this work, the staff to be engaged in this work going forward, are working in the court as well. Uh, Mr. Prasenio, we met earlier this evening, he has a significant role in the electric program this year, um, but I just felt like it was worthy of taking the time to say it for a very long time, and not just the high school, but multiple levels, actually throughout our organization. We know that we've got to create multiple, um, pathways for kids to meet those needs, so that, you know, by the time they get to the beginning, and area will, they move on in the need to both of that, and starts in their lives in the future. So, um, this is the first step in the process towards making the group continue that program going forward. So, this is a public hearing, at this time, if anybody wants to speak to this program, uh, please come forward and let us hear your comments. This is, uh, that's all we're going to do for this hearing, and allow some public comments to be given. So, we will move on to the superintendent's report, 2018, 2019 birthday review. Trust me, as is the case with all departments, providing, should we record a big curriculum department, is here today, providing, should we record that department, and unlike most other departments, this is very big, and is, because that's our core business, teacher level. And what you'll find in the report beginning on page fourteen, and moving through page twenty-seven, is it is a comprehensive view of all of the aspects of our educational administration program, from college and career, military readiness, uh, our continuous growth process, which our next season will, as we speak, set goals in all the areas for next year. Uh, you'll see that information about all of our core content, specials, and the work of our folks in all the continuous improvement across the system at all grade levels in all schools. You'll see language around our very specific efforts around UK, rural language, English is a second language, our family and community education services, our library services, our response to intervention for struggling students on academic side, as well as with the part of the theater, special education, the flexing of our scheme, which we saw some events tonight, one of those oldest of our scheme, probably, you can see a car in those programs, right? Standardized grading, our super schedule, which our principal brought, um, and our continued year goals update with regard to program, I have the goals to be brought forth for you to consider, areas to issue, and issue. So, at this time, it starts, uh, by answering the questions that you had, and if there's any other points that you might have made to start with.
Actually, I have a bit of a lead call to make, so, um, so mid-afternoon, someone to Ryan, to the board, as, um, someone said, was very lengthy report in the report book, I'm just going to tell them a few highlights for you. So, one of our goals, had to do with building capacity to campus centers, we did add some new positions this year, instructional facilitators and program facilitators at campus level, um, we've had academic facilitators for quite a while, um, so, the way we supported all of them this year, all of those groups have their own company names, with groups of staff, we did do some very specific training and planning with the academic facilitators and these for our quarterly planning that we have, um, built into our calendar. We did some time studies with these groups to see how, um, to compare their job search and how they're getting in time, and learning positions, we want to make sure that they cover it in there. Um, we've had an eighty-three percent retention rate of that group. Um, most of the new facilities in the instructional facilitators, which goes, um, people do part-time work on the campuses, the teach part of the day, and then the teaching part of the day. Um, and then we also had individual coaching and mentors with them. Our next goal was, um, in the mid-year survey, it had to do with a level of cooperation, uh, campuses and the departments still, like they have our, each of our sub-departments, our goal was to score at least eight percent in that area, and three of our six, uh, sub-departments did score about eighty percent, and four of the six had improved. So, this is a goal that we carried over from last year, or with some adjustments, this has to do with our district district curriculum for all of our courses. Um, there are lots and lots of courses offered throughout the district, um, at all levels, and that could course some of these and elective areas. So, um, our goal, for our staffs, in the last year, that we had forty percent of all of the courses had a district curriculum, um, and ninety-four percent of the core courses, and so our goal was to increase that by twenty-five percent, make sure we get a sixty-five percent, um, measure, we only had fifty-five or seventy courses with district curriculum. Keep in mind that that's all the electives and everything, and these are courses that don't measure with you. As far as the core courses, though, all, we did, did it a hundred percent of the required core courses completed, um, ninety-six percent of core courses, because there are, there's like a couple of math and science classes that we did not get curriculum, we did on, but they are not required courses. And then our final goal was to spend twenty percent of our time during the week on coaching, finding feedback, observing the management system, and you can see all aspects of those we did in our goal. So, the areas that we were focusing on this year are qualities, as you know, we love works with rural language, with the organization of that program, we had our task force meeting throughout the fall, um, we came up with a proposal to do the rural language academies, since that was approved, we've had parent meetings, we've had a lot of, um, work on the staffing, because we had two, um, sort of teachers up between the two campuses, we have a new director, a new coordinator, and very recently, a new specialist in the valuable ESL program. Um, so we've done a lot of work, had to do that area, and we're ready to next year. In college career and military readiness, um, lots of certification programs, you saw the Electric Card program earlier, um, this, quick theory, instrumental, and the leadership academy off the ground, along with the campus staff there, and, um, then we have special education, as you probably are aware, there are a lot of changes. You probably are aware, there were a lot of changes towards medical issues in special education with the state of Texas. And so, we've spent a lot of time this year to make sure identifying the correct students for special education. We also had a group called the mod squad together and they were working on, with our mod squad personnel, making sure that the students are still getting the curriculum that they need, also that they are being evaluated in a proper way. Assessment. Great configuration, as you're aware, we did three, we saw campuses and quite a good time ever this year, looking at staffing, looking at resources and a lot of those up in most campuses. Confirmation, 2019, we approved that in March. That was the pay through eight, English and Spanish, arts, textbook adoption is massive. We've got lots of materials coming in this summer to be ready in the fall. Curriculum management plan, that does that to the, the curriculum body that I talked about earlier, covering the district curriculum for ready courses and getting that out to the campuses. We've got our online curriculum toolkit, that's a continuous thing we're working on. Different place rating, initially putting device, what we call curriculum content. We identified the most important thing within each of the courses and also wrote efficiency seals for that. And that is used for this way of preparing to determine the level that the students are shooting at. And lastly, assessment, we worked on our board assessments this year. We implemented internal assessments from the state. We have some training specific to assessment and getting efficiency score.
I want to push a question out of the crowd, just thinking for staff to come in, all of our different programs around. A lot of offer are here, and I think we have a lot of staff, I know all the six, several of you.
Thank you, we've got a really great staff.
Do we want to move to the community management system? We move on to the community management system. Trust me, this service will provide a board update of our work, probably in this kind of a system. Before we record, it has been compiled through today, we're considering priorities and then again, answering a few questions and gathering evidence to, to the reach of, to make the projects, which of those areas, pillars, is the entire report. The issues are some findings. This person will provide you those findings, each of those pillars, briefly, and then she's going to show us our first attempt to establish a system in the system. So, just as a reminder, a few years back, we pulled together, including the representation across the district, parents and students, as well as business and industry partners, community partners, higher ed, city officials, and we worked for the better part of two years, build out, built out seven pillars. Basically, each of those pillars represent an aspect of this school system. Comprehensive leaders represent all aspects of this school system. And our effort there was to be clear about what the community expects for us to accomplish. And it is our responsibility in designing our school systems in such a way that experiences that kids have resulted in those outcomes. That system currently happens based on our profile credit and it's aligned with mission, mission values and forces. And so, we're happy that we're three years into the work. Mr. Brazil, Mr. Massey, Mr. Ryan, and I, and this service today, George, and Mr. Sarah, like I already, a little bit about where we're at. Learning a little bit about where we're going. And I think we were all pleased to know that there's a handbook out there now to do this work. And I think that we all saw real clearly recently, it was on the front page of this work a few years ago, and that we felt we need additions along with helping ourselves to do the point work. We feel like we're beginning to develop something really to drive meaningful change in our system. Again, these is our community, this service, and also the results in the most optimized of all of our teams. So, yeah, we turn to this service.
So, again, I have a presentation, I'm kind of here to follow along. Just a little catch-up on what we did doing, that's the, I'll put this in the anyway, we're going to be anywhere that you approve the line of order for this. So, since then, we did form committees, we have a chairperson for each of the pillars, for each of seven pillars. Those committees then gathered, examined, interpreted all the evidence and data and information they could find based on key questions that are attached to each of the pillars. And that's the report, the senior report book, that link document, that's all of the information that they had gathered. And then once they got all of that together, they determined what their findings were need or, you know, what were the things that kind of bubbled up, the things that, something they were common work on, or just some things that they might have noticed in looking at data. And then finally, they made some decisions regarding what areas we might want to make some change in and created a signal chart, which that is, we're not going to explain that in the minutes. So, our first pillar is student learning progress. The IC will provide meaningful and interesting learning experiences, ensuring that all students reach their growth goals. So, in that pillar, some of the things that we discovered, issue we didn't have in the learning loss previously, we had. And we had that, I was just, the campus goals this year, but we, we're considering that. We feel like we might need to have some common data collection at this level now. We do need to continue creating ways for students to understand and demonstrate evidence, learning in authentic ways. Student led conferences, one of the key questions in this pillar is communicating with, communicate student goals with campus activities, and one way to do that is to use the, we did have that at summer campus, but we're considering expanding. As I talked about a minute ago, utilize efficiency scales, hopefully not in size this year, but our next step is we're going to just help this event as an instructional tool, with the teachers in there. Curriculum audit, that's back to that curriculum management plan again, we're continuing to work towards a hundred percent goal. This is very important for our courses. And then also, student learning progress pillar, we need to continue working on a lot of other programs, gaps in part of the areas, and I'm still pushing, pushing for it and growing. Second pillar, those secondary readiness, these guys, these schools will care, these guys, these students, specifically they have an employment and success in the future, ensure students are real well ready. We find this area. So, we have checked to see what signals that those secondary plans that I knew what we wanted to do after high school, university, junior school, grad school, military, going to workforce, and so, we grew up twenty-three percent this year from last year to this year and remember this at Patland. Also, we've got a minimal increase in our students taking those other readiness exams. So, that's the destination exam, the exams, ASVAD, we actually have all the juniors take that. ACT, SAT, and actually back to T S O, we have focused on the soft course this year, in fact, a pretty big increase of them taking that key to the class. We're looking forward plans, we're looking forward to high school plans. If you look at the cohorts of students throughout the high school, you can see that, and to go through the cohorts sort of increasing each year, so we need more and more of our kids to pull the plans. We're only twenty-three seniors that over seven hundred in the graduate class, but didn't have endorsement as part of their graduation. And then also, we're just sort of working more and more students in the college career and military readiness area. We documented about two thousand CCMR interactions this whole year from PK all the way up to high school. And then, exciting thing, we have closed the house in regard to AP student graphics, we've got plenty of general student population. So, we've had a possibly insane percentage of each graphic in the general population, as are taking J P classes. And we're investing dollars in that for, so we're looking for a part of that. The third pillar, engagement around the students. The IC will empower all students through diverse experiences beyond the classroom, to be productive members of our community. So, some of the things we discovered, we feel like we need to have some other lines of communication regarding marketing of our programs and opportunities through social media and through websites. Another thing we discovered is, we don't really have an effective efficient system in place to collect information and to evaluate these programs and activities to see if they are, you know, what the students want, what the community wants, how effective they are. So, a possibility would be for this to be better moved as everybody's to find that out. And also, the last thing on this is, we need to make more of an effort to decide who are these extra opportunities and experiences we should have for all students, we should expect of all students, and maybe look at, I don't really know what we're going to put there on that. Community engagement partnerships, these guys will partner with external stakeholders, this weekend, community involvement, and leadership conference. So, we are known citywide for our performance engagement and connection. We want to thank you, we wanted us to open the best food school. We were the first district in San Antonio to offer paid summer internships to our students. We have nineteen principal and identified working partnerships for students who participate at work sites. But we do need a more effective way of tracking and identifying partnerships. About five percent of our student population participate onsite or face turning. And again, we don't have a really good method of evaluating the impact of this. So, something that we need to work on, and we see that we went in, again, the board agree in our opinion. Quality of the staff, these two have situation to ensure the highest quality workforce, to provide the best possible student outcomes for the central community. So, our design is large intervention, we do have those practice systems in place. There is some evidence that students and staff, that we do have their application of our students and staff as a payment of surveys. What we are finding is that we, we don't have a lot of evidence and fidelity to all our programs, to best practices and resources. This is another thing that you are able to see collected in our annual results measures that we will be looking at later on this evening. The area of differentiation is one on the deep evaluation system where we do have some work. We only have one direct teachers. When we had one, there are teachers that were toward a developing level or who are in this area where we're doing some professional development. Inconsistent data regarding reality, the system attracts non-staffed leads in the district. And then one of our annual results measures has to do with staff retention. So, we need to turn on our system for tracking why. We do have some actual evidence for the current student teacher's highly effective lighting quality. We have to say what's called an equity plan, and we do have to determine student effectiveness, and that is another area where I'm going to do a lot on that. And we do have some, and this is from operational systems. These guys people optimize resources for operational efficiency and student success. So, that first bullet is a really big, important one, and again, it's part of our annual results measures. We need to put a process in place to assure that when we're setting our budgets, they are aligned to the steps that we do. We are doing these steps currently in all departments and campuses. We just want to make sure that we are making really effective use of our funds and resources, make sure we're supporting our needs. One thing we have discussed is efficiency of staff resources. Remember, a few minutes ago, I talked about this in time studies with the instructional facilitators and the program facilitators. We are looking at also even that with some other staff. Our district inventory system is something that we are looking at aligning. We've had a committee working on that, also part of our end control measures. Staff attendance procedures, also a member of the labor in the agenda is looking at some ways to improve, increase staff attendance, and one of those is to find our three days of on time. And then also, we keep it for, reducing time. And the final pillar is student safety lobby. Each of these guys, these cameras will provide the environment and ensure students are protected, safe, and supported emotionally and visibly. So, we did have evidence that students felt safer at school this year than they did last year. We also did a decrease in student aggression. We have system device to report threatening and bullying behavior. We have system device to support students' social and emotional wellbeing, in particular through educators. We've had an increase in staff with student training for emergency situations this year. System device to identify needs and next stakeholders to support services, again, for educators. We do need some consistent data collection systems for some of these areas. And we also need to have some additional promotion of, making more. So, that's each of these seven pillars. And I find some of those, and as I mentioned several times, we're, as we're moving through our new continuous growth process, we're going to see a lot of these things popping up in the annual results measures, in our strategies within our improvement plans. And so, there's definitely a connection of what we're doing with the community management system and in our district improvement plan. So, there's one other thing that I want to show you, this is definitely a work in progress. You do have in your packet, packet with a chart, it's colorful paint on there. This is our signaling system that comes up there. Yeah, I'm going to have to put the audience, so if you guys will see it under the packet. So, what we have done is, we have taken each of the pillars, we took the seven pillars, and it will come when we were developing the pillars, we handled the key questions that we would ask ourselves about each pillar to help guide us in determining what evidence or data or measures we would want to review to determine how we were doing in that pillar. So, on these charts, you have each of the key questions for that pillar. And then we have a color code system. And the colors over there, I'll give you a second, it's on the other paper, but there's a light blue color, which basically that's meaning, for that key question, based on the evidence we reviewed, at least for now, we're satisfied with our current efforts and we're just going to maintain that quality. There's a dark colored blue on the paper, and that means that we're going to maintain for now, but we might consider a change for quality in this area. for now, but we might consider a change for color in this area. There's a green color, which means we already look at that you have minor change, if our minor change, we need something that maybe within a year, we could put in place, whatever it is that we're going to, whatever strategy we're talking in place. And then there's red, which means it would be more of a major change, and it might be something that might take a few years to put over there in place that we would need to. And then white, there's certain ones that might not be applicable right now, it might not necessarily be something that we're working on right now, particularly for campuses, it might not be at the same level for campuses. So there are two that have white on there. So back to green and red, this is another thing that, once it were color coded that way, you'll see that we've quite a bit in our group and kind of like that. Now, for now, we just have one column here of this color coding. But the plan is that we will check all these things, we do these things quarterly, and then determine how, where we are on that. If we are on track with what our strategies we put in place, do we need some help on it? We'll decide those things each quarter and then report that back to you. And so, like I said, it's a work in progress. So we're going to be putting in four columns up here for each quarter, so that we can let you know as we go through the year, how we're doing on these things, that we've not defined, that we might need to make some changes on. Okay, so our next steps, our next steps are, so this is the district one. So this is each of the seven pillars. Those committees that met throughout the spring and created the core of the packet also came up with the signaling for each of those pillars. Well, what we have asked campuses to do is their own signaling chart for one pillar. And the pillar we chose this year is community engagement and partnerships. So each of the campuses currently are doing one of these charts for that particular pillar with the key questions, the same key questions that we had at district one. And so that, that is also part of their campus assessment that they're currently working on as they do their annual results measures and as they do their improvement plans. So then, we will develop a group of strategies based on all of these findings we just discussed, the signaling that I just showed you, and send the align to our district campus and department annual results measures. Then, in the fall, we will be publishing the community report. It's what we called last year, last fall, we have that community report that we printed and sent out to everyone, also posted online. So we will have one of those in this fall. And then throughout next year, we're going to be progress monitoring the annual results measures and the strategies. Again, we'll do the signaling quarterly on the C V S charts. We also will be doing quarterly checks on our improvement plans. We'll be seeing more of that probably in August or September, we'll see those plans. And so, our goal is to just have continuous progress monitoring to check how we're doing as we go throughout the year and be able to report back to you as needed, which is the last bullet. We'll report next year, we'll both report, but we also will report periodically as appropriate as we go through. Any questions?
Other than the breaking of our promise of support pillar, that breaks down percentage of students, for example, African-American, and if you ask for higher score, it's lower, you ask for higher score, and you email white score seven percent higher than the district average. I've always asked, why is there such a big difference? And I don't want to hear, you can associate on this text, but answer is just not, doesn't satisfy my why. I, I would like to, I want a resource or a tool that maybe I can use to find out why that's the case. I know that goes to show, but other than that, sorry, other than that, it's just really, it's always the same language, you know, why it's always so higher than African-Americans and Americans. And it's, that's great and all, but I, I'm trying to fight for, you know, those, those students that, I want them to struggle with the other race. And it's not a race, it's just, it's just, I want to know why, what do you need to, and I know you have to look at it, but maybe provide me a beat or something.
I'll, I'll add one thing to the note for this session. You're absolutely right. A student achievement is not directly correlated necessarily to socioeconomic status or demographics or discipline. But one of the things important is most of students, one is what degree of participation outside of the classroom are engaged, because having school, kids that happen to be involved in clubs or organizations or other activities in school tend to be significantly more successful. The biggest variable happens to be involved. When a student happens to come from poverty, being worried by a money group, or is a boy versus a girl, the field is about parents involved and partnering in this system. So that is one way to overcome the traditional transunseen, the one aspect, one measure, which is the standardized test. So I think that's real important, because that's why we ask the campuses to focus on community engagement partnerships. As the pillar, we're going to start with, because we know that that's the most important way to give kids the best opportunity. You can't be just a system, change your minds for kids. It's a partnership with parents and families, and sometimes parents and families are not fair. And so that's why we have these cares and other layers of social systems that basically provide, connect our families, our children, with the support that they need so that they can, right? And we have to continue to incorporate programs on what S and P, which provide, you know, all kinds of social emotional support, ambition, backup support, one-on-one, all kinds of customized opportunities, give some, some resources, experience, some mentoring, some... So that's one aspect, and it's very complex. The other point is worth making is, the statistics you referred to again, the standardized test, which does a whole body of research around why that test would be the case, just like the Central District, it's not a state, it's a national test. What was presented today is an attempt to make sure that we have true accountability in our own community and tour, it's not a partial account. If you just look at days like the Children at Risk Report, it looks at one test on one day, says this kid is, this is a bad kid, you know, this is a smart kid, this is not a smart kid. And we don't pay attention to the kid that's nationally trained, hand-built, electric car, who happens to be a girl, and happens to be an minority, and happens to be a problem. We tell that kid, you are not smart. Well, very central, we're looking at the total child, we're looking at the total experience, and we're trying to provide complete accountability. We're simply representing things that aren't about good behavior, they're fully transparent, and they're active, they're saying, hey, we've got some things, we think they're tracking okay. We have a lot of things that we need to do better. We need to track some things every week, we need to make sure we're holding people accountable, the fidelity of implementation, like, we're doing days that the state reports not getting exposed, and that many districts aren't a part of this kind of work, are not going to contribute. And so we're hoping that all of our causes start to get the same, here's the good, here's the bad, here's the good. There are discrepancies, because all of our causes are open. Because what we're interested in is helping the child, from the time they touch it, four years old, from the time they did this, they're interacting, in such a way that we felt to enrich the lives, with the monitor jack, with the success, despite where they come from, and despite whether we have a neat body of support around that child, give the school system and outside of the school system, that we're going to do our very best to get them. And so, we're concerned, you saw us present the comparison gaps in student performances and learning. There are also some things that we should be pretty, pretty excited about, they're unusual, right? For the first time in the history of these central high schools, we can say that we look at our most challenging academic courses, they look like the rest of our student population. They're not just white, and they're not just boys. There's a good distribution of white, African-American, poor, wealthy, gifted, not, that are taking to our end, which you know what that means? It means that all these people in the district are saying, we believe every kid can, little boys, little girls, poor boys, brown boys, white boys, everybody can be smart, everybody can thrive, but we're going to access to our best stuff. And you know who else does that? Not very many of you. We should have a right there, but we've got a lot of people we're not happy about. And I'm telling you, ten years from now, we're going to say there's a lot of people we're not happy about, you know why? Because we're not building cars, and we teach the children. They're not ours. We love them, they're ours, but this group is going to stand against us. And so one of the most complex organizations in the world is the school system. We don't focus on money. So it's a very good question, valid question, the question that keeps us up behind every one of us, if you do this, that's our life's work. And I promise you, it'd be like the eyes of a competition, if you could find the silver bullet overnight to solve a problem. So, you know, the best thing, good, I don't, I just don't want people to think that these people in this organization think our best is good. It's not. Nobody makes excuses for that. Or any of the city.
That's just, that's one specific area. And again, the teacher evaluation system has to do with equalization for student needs within the classroom. And it's an area that we need to see that is very important, and we need to help this company.
Especially in the same conversations, you've got early readers, you've seen that early readers in classroom, you've got one reading at the first grade level, five reading at the second grade level, or twelve reading at the tenth grade level. As a teacher, you'll teach the whole group. A really good teacher has to provide every kid what they do where they're at, at the same time. Well, that's the most complex part of teaching. Just so happens, your evaluation, your teachers are active, they're standing, you know, only six out of ten will be that well, and that's not okay. Would you do, would you, would you write? Hundreds of our teachers would be able to do that very well. That's an excellent teaching. So we need to provide the training, more support, honor, you know, our teachers' connection with their lessons, their science, their plans, and their execution, include maybe Partnership. So the numbers are the numbers. The difference is always there, trying to change those numbers. Now, we're only successful, and in many cases, we are successful, but there are some cases where you're not going to be successful. You are not going to change with the technology and athletics. You're supposed to run faster than your dogs per hour, and you're supposed to be stronger than anybody. So you have to be able to factor in some of those things, and understand that most engineers in this country are lucky, for whatever reason, maybe they did it, and most of the little girls don't. That's a reason, but there's a fact. But there are going to be some things that you're just not going to be able to change as you visit a lot. There are some things that you cannot change coming from that. A parent who allows a child to stay up until two in the morning, doing things whatever they're doing, that child is, don't have problems at school, I'm interested in that. Years ago, I had a young man, third grade, fall asleep while he was talking to him. Now, I bore people a lot. I understand if you fall asleep while I'm talking. But this is the way they fell asleep while he was talking. His mother lined straight up as long as he wanted to. Long as she considered she was talking. Some of that stuff, you can't, we can fire our best. That young man's going to be fine. Unfortunately, young man is a worker for the single family. That's the socioeconomic situation that you have. And there are some things you're not going to be able to do. But we need to do the best that we can. We need to show that we're really the best that we can. And we need to do the best that we can. We need to find out where those children come from, those backgrounds who are successful or who, and we need to try and replicate that as best we, best that we can across the district, but that's something that happens. I'm, I'm with you, this time. If you can find the blood to pull it out and pour it in, listen, listen. He, he cannot take, as he said, a single break from a partially reinforced system, partially learning, and beg some of the money. And that's what agenda, bringing the roots to do, whether it's the state legislature, and they do it, and they do it all for it, or whether it's some of these other groups out there, and they're religious by creating a violence, so that they get more value and they get more attention. Yes, yes, we can, but I challenge you to convince me that that mother that's super creative, straight up, all night long, is going to do anything to be sensible. I challenge you to make me believe that the group that's putting that garbage out, because it brings that money, is going to do anything to be said. I challenge you to tell me that the reporter who produces that is going to do anything for hereabouts, instead of getting that order back there that makes people want to do. Absolutely. So in some cases, we have to discount that and quit paying attention to it, and do what we know that we need to do.
I have a question that, I mean, there's asked about, you know, I didn't see that percentage for a very long time, I believe, by the system, you know, since I mean, all time, there's not a special magic potion to address that. But I know we are, and that's what we're talking about tonight, but my question is, based on the things that we're dealing with, do we see the gap, you know, less of it coming down, or do things will, you know, get better? And does it change? The, the fighting magic bullet is hard to do, and that changes every year, they follow the pushing at home, and so, my question, I guess, is, is if you want it to be better, maybe this happened a year or two, you're, 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 but do you see that that is getting less, than, you know, maybe thirteen percent, not passing, or fifteen percent, twenty percent, is it seven percent better, you know, are we heading in that direction?
I would say if some areas is seeing better, some is not. I think what we're doing is a better job of identifying individual students' needs and working with those students in small groups. I know this year, we did a lot of work on the campuses, identifying smaller groups of students, that we paid them an extra amount of help and assistance in their specific areas of need, that we raised the, pushed them up, and that has been successful. So, so I do think we are starting to make some headway in that area.
I think that, should you change the mindset of your parents, you're going to be talking about this in an older and greater, you're just trying to change. If you don't have a parent that's as well checking on your children, how are you going to do in the classroom, or what was your homework, what should be done? He's not going to improve. Parents will say, I'm tired, I worked hard, I don't have time, I just want to sit and rest. That is definitely not a good child. And to change that mindset...
And to change that mindset, that child, all children are suffering. And I talked about this myself, I asked, "Why is it that?" Which is a good question, the same question I asked on the first team on board. And it hasn't been answered, because the mindset of the parent has not changed. We cannot convince people. I spoke to a VTA that hung me a couple of years ago. Asked for five minutes, he said, "If we just ask a couple of questions, folks, do you remember when the little one learned to tie his shoes, his shoes? I'm going to say he, like, I'm just, or he, right? When that child learned to tie his shoes, to button the blouse, the shirt, to brush the teeth, to brush the hair? That child was learning. Who was the teacher? You were the teacher. But once he crosses into the campus, you didn't teach him. You teach him. Well, that's your job. That's true. But why did that child learn at home before he came to school? Then now the parents washed their hands of the education? That's the problem. We need to get that mindset changed, convince them. And I told them, I said, "Folks, you were the teacher way back then. Why are you now drawing the ball? You need to continue to push it, nerve. Hey, what did you do today? What do you need to do? Do you understand this? And a little, a little help will go a long way because the child understands, "Mom and Dad are involved with me, and then they put, she want me, I want to be better, I want to, I want to be, I want them to be proud of me." But if they're not involved, child's like, "I'm not okay." They're not, they're not ready. And that is what we have to change. I had the same question about this time. And until we change those folks, we don't, we don't talk about this program.
Oh, there's some, some parents are like, some of these parents are looking to free up. Does we need to change their mindset? Maybe they don't know the programs we have. There, some, some would think it changes, others aren't. But I, I get it, I totally get it.
Well, okay, one more question. My mom had a seventh grade education. It was hard because my grandfather moved, he did jobs for the country. My dad had three years of education, and then he learned English from a book. He tried to learn, I was a lot, hearing it, folks. I was a booker. And he had an oven accent. But as a teenager, I used to listen to it. The vocabulary he was using was something I had studied, perhaps something I knew that I wasn't using, yet he was using it, and he was using it properly. I was prepared for that. But the thing is, because my mother had seventh grade education, she pushed, she says, "Do you need this type?" They both were. I think mom made a bucket of words in the cabin with her baby. So I understand what you're saying, but it also, it's a different mindset. My parents were of the idea that you don't want to be a laborer like I am in the university life. You need to study, son, you need to study, you need to get out of this world. So, yes, they didn't hire, they didn't, but they always asked, "Are you staying up on current research studies?" At least there was something like that. And because of them, I had an education, because they pushed me. And once I got older, I did on my own, and cheap, because I saw it, I needed to. But it was planted way back from when they were, "You need to study." So, yes, I understand, and I'm like, "I'm tired, I'm tired." Yes, they're tired. But there's a little encouragement from the parent for the child to grow along with it. If that child, like, doesn't sit, allow him to stay up as long as he wants, that's not good, that's not good. So there's a being the same for everyone. Now, I don't have the idea, okay, my dad, I just taught you two more days, but I put, instead of doing that. So until we change that, I don't have the same question. Why? Why is? No, 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 it's a totally wrong, completely wrong. Uh, okay.
No, 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 I get it, I get it.
And what I'm saying is, yeah, no, I'm sorry, Mom. Uh, the whole thing is, we need to get that, okay. City of San Antonio, having lectures recently, a million people, about eight hundred thousand or thousands of voters. How many voting on that? There you go. Same thing we have here. It doesn't matter, what I'm saying is, like, the point is participation. Until, until voting, you don't have, you still have to give. And you've got nothing to say, because you earned that party, it's yours because you kind of got seed. And it can reduce, and it's your fault. And we have to, we have to get across those.
At San Antonio, we should have some of this, 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 I'm not sure. So John, so, and as a educator, and a professional educator, too, he said that he learned himself that I have to complete the education field. But he would say, he was saying, that the issue of doctors as a poor and less education to all of us. He said that he doesn't believe that children are a product of their environment. They're a product of our expectations. And we don't care, it's not we don't care. We love you, we're sorry that, you know, we have hardships at home, and things are rough. But that does, we're going to change our expectations. We're going to stay up here. And so we think a lot of sense that we can overcome that environment because while we have it, we can say, "We're not going to change our expectations. We're going to get there. We're going to work to reach there. And we're going to not worry about that out there. Go with us, and we're not going over expectations. We're going to be successful." So I think we should be respectful. And, you know, because we can't do anything about that. But we can do what we have, we can charge it, so.
And, and I think if this group does that, their problem is, the problem is, at some point, you have to test those children to see where they are. Now, what kind of tests are you using? We know that the standardized tests that are given in this country are geared to white, upper-class men. That's what the test is designed for. And in that license, they refer to it. So if you look at those tests to see where your kids are, you're going to get the same result every time because of the way those tests are written. Those tests are also ready for fifty percent failure and fifty percent pass. If they find a question that everybody gets, they throw it out. If they find a question that everybody fails, they throw it out. So fifty percent are going to pass, fifty percent are going to fail. Standardized testing. We need to not use that. We need to say, "Every child pay learn," and we need to do our best. But we also need to understand what we do those results. That the real world is the real world. We want the best, we're going to do our best for them. Everybody here is dedicated for that, so that's what we said here.
And if we, I know this is going on, but I like to.
It's why we're here, it's a good discussion.
And you of what we've all heard, and, and I'm thinking back about a few years ago, California, and real conversation about what all of this looked like and how these people are. There's a, there's a lot of subjectivity, there's a lot of objectivity there. And trying to mesh that is, is challenging. But I want to leave us with this. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to see the backdrop of all of this for three years of, I saw a lot of, it's hurt, but it wasn't just those two. It's all of everybody that brought them to the point with the dad and all of that to help us, to, 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 to the community-based accountability, there are a lot, or I, I, I do, I can, I can ability to, I heard what's truly a accountability and, and some other things that can help us to understand that. But the end result of this is what benefits each child. There's a lot of those into a model that makes certain that every child has benefited from whatever you brought to the table or whatever is going to happen with that child. So that every child can receive the very best regardless of the circumstances and including the circumstances that they can have. And I want to, but let me share with you. I saw other districts look up to, to San Antonio, because they were, I mean, it's a lot of stuff, it's a lot of overtime, but they were able to even help the facilitator explain to those. And so people are, are really trying to learn and get a handle of this. There's some things that we absolutely cannot do, can't do that. But there are a lot of things that we can. There's some things that are mandated to us that we have to be able to work in for the hoops of all of that to still accomplish. But if this any benefits the district that's there, this is a question that we have. So I, I, I'm going to end with that. I had a little emotion too, but I think emotion is a little bit. Because we need to have conversations, so we can be on the same page, and we can have what you're saying. Once we have that, then we can help other people as much as we're listening to this, yeah. And I think this is under working progress. I'm excited about it.
All right, so we've done exactly what we said we were going to do all along. We're going to pay more attention to our community-based accountability system than we are the state management, because we know that they're not good. You know, they don't fit this community. It's a reason why there are over a thousand school districts in the state of Texas. You're supposed to be driven by your community, and that's what we're going to be driven upon. And we're going to pay less attention to state accountability, to standardized testing. There are many things, and we're going to see some improvement. And we've got to look at the big picture. We can't be biologically focused on one little thing. We've got to look at the big picture. So we will move on to this point. So, yes.
I would like to say thank you for, y'all for putting this, and listening to this. There's a lot of matter of work, I should say, and everything. You've got to do all this research, it's a lot of work. And y'all want to get to where we want to get, where, for educating the kids, so I think leaving this as a tool that you need in your toolbox to get. If you don't know what you don't know, the only way to find out is ask questions, and ask questions to the right, the right person, with everybody in the community, the staff, children, parents, and we're going to do that right here. To get where we want to go, this is the tool.
All right, so we'll get on to the personnel report. Sir, you may need to start social. Your electronic packet on page fifty-three, this is this month's personnel report. And this is the time of year where there is a lot of activity in that report. You'll see employees listed in the report this month. We kind of add a status column, so you can see differentiated those that retired from those, because I'm, from those. Who, who's hired, who are rehired, who left as a result of a program change, as you recall, we had the program for the debt. And the shift to assess the, the, the closed relationship. So, having said that, there's a lot of activity there. We'd have you share more details with you if you desire. I'll give additional information for you. I'd also like to look back, here, this is one of the busiest months of the year, the personnel. Look back to June last year and compare to June this year. And the numbers are relatively equal. Give or take one or two employees in each category. So the, the, the activity in the personnel part, June to June is, is comparable. So there's no, no patterns there that suggest that we can look at the deep growth rate. This, this, this one has, has the June, this, previous year. Apparently, individual questions about people who are working with, get some issues as well. So much previous.
Sorry, I'm happy. I was just wondering, along with something like this, where you have mentioned a system for tracking, along with stat needs, can we apply that to this, you know, this time? And if, because I would say in, in through your action, or whatever, do you know, do you know these representations at all?
So, yeah, so that particular, that particular item needs some fusion. We do have interviews, but we don't do this differentiate and report. Categories of employees, no, no, I'm saying for our review. We want to know every class of employee and why they left. We want to know who they did because they didn't have a dream, they didn't want to fight for what they did, they were in a leadership, or it wasn't pay was for, or that was before. Or, you know, they're, because they got stationed in the rest, they left their job. Or, yes, so there's different kinds of, a ton of them. And we just don't have confidence enough for it to say, "My job classification." We can't pull out the bus drivers who have left us and provide a report. We go, "Is there patterns? We believe because of pay, or we believe because of pain, or we believe, right, because of this, this champion of leadership." If there's patterns like that for a class of employee, then maybe we can find opportunities for improvement. So what we found in this work was, and we need a lot better reporting system. We tested interviews, and so that's, that's actionable. How do we, make this work? Just, this time I'd like to call our team from the maintenance department, Mr. Ratstein, Mr. Moore, Mr. Alonso, about four with his update. Or maintenance department, and I believe the slide deck is on page fifty-seven. You can try and track it all along there. I believe they're in the, behind this, as well.
Good evening, this is Mr. Scott, I'm Mr. Ryan, board members. Good evening, bringing the session to a close. Today, maintenance, maintenance department will address the goals that are in our fiscal purpose of the year. So maintenance, other maintenance, we have maintenance, grounds, management, and body of interest. So we're going to discuss all of them briefly. Performance facilities will increase operational efficiency for comprehensive management of facilities and work orders, pipe and culture. Facilities will enhance customer service while, while being a high level department under fiscal responsibility. Facilities will identify and implement a budget quality reductions and maintain production at a low cost. So our progression on, on the goals, full performance grounds, business campuses weekly. Maintenance maintaining three or five day efficient rate on work orders and strong hurdles. Project manager, manager overseeing all onboard projects to ensure that the street is able to receive enough of service. For cultural requirements, facilities continues to maximize customer service by increased communication. We are currently scheduled to annual PMs on all equipment and on annual mandated safety inspections. Or fiscal responsibility, engine management is maximized by converting LED light, changing old page rack equipment and more additional equipment. Also continues to happen, the engine rebates and participate in the maintenance swaps. The district admin station, I've heard in the thousands, that no cost to our district not participating in the maintenance swaps. We're currently doing that now, maybe those, June first, June first. Maintenance will, it will maximize, I'm sorry, will, will continue to minimize inventory for metal waste. And we're being due diligent by obtaining competitive quotes who can go out and price them last and not waste. It's only, it's all hard to return at least a percent of all these ones. Mr. Moore will now share some results.
Some of the results are support.
Some of the results of our support bar, we are, our goal of one is to specify a minimum of ten work orders per supervisor lead, which is a place of forty a week minimum. Have to announce that we're averaging a hundred and five per week, with two hundred and sixty-four percent of airline things done correctly. Goal number two is increase number of workers completed per week. We average a key two hundred and five work orders per week. The campuses average, including three hundred and seven work orders. We'll never get ahead of the bomb game, we're staying above water in the queue. Goal three is make workers a timing, actually excluding non-control variables as we announced. Workers less than five days, we average closing eighty-two of those a week. Workers five to twenty-nine days, we average a hundred and twenty-two. And workers greater than thirty days, it's a hundred and seventy-one. Some variables are a subscription order request, parts on order, backwards, things like that. Our survey results, we'll go in depth in each one of them, but the last two years, we've seen a positive increase in our communication and work provided to the campuses. And if we see this next survey come out, then we'll have another reference next week, so we're trading in the right direction. We've got surveys that go out to both work orders, but we've been positively backed into it too. This is now my past work with Mr. Ratstein to kind of summarize it all.
In summary, the area customer service will continue to increase communication with all campuses and departments, with use of work order surveys and consistent follow-up. Continue to streamline processes and coordinate concerning facility management during, during trade and follow-up. In order to ensure that transparency, feedback, finding information, we'll continue to create education with government and community needs, with all facility management supervisors and non-teams for campuses. In our area of orders, we will continue partnering operations in the size of consistency, contingency equipment replacement, and long-term schedule. Continue to acquire by speaker facility communications and addition needs. We'll continue to support leader, support leader supervisor and trades, or training staff up by growth. Within our department, we will continue to insist on recruitment and retention of FM staff, cross-training, support provision of talent. We will also continue with extensive budget, long-term planning, on purchase of equipment and services needed for the city management. There's a complete operation in this line. Any questions?
Isn't it greater to send one worker per campus?
I swear, I swear to you, is that bad? That was a case to be coming to you for a long time.
So I have a question that's already on our feedback. I see comments in the feedback, and I see that we have y'all got four responses. It doesn't seem like a lot of response to your communication, so my question of the other leadership in the district is, how come I don't get feedback from the campuses? How do they know the kind of job they're doing if they don't get feedback? So we've got some other goals around here to say that we want a hundred percent of departments participating in our systems, and it looks like we've got a lot less participation here. But y'all guys all omnipotent, you can just T S P with people.
Yeah, I do, I have to comment on that. So the surveys go out to everybody in the field, and so the sample size is, is pretty large. And the question is, if you do not rate the department excellent, what can you do to achieve that? So it doesn't offer a written comment unless they felt like the service was less than expected, and it was, they're commenting. So we looked at the survey results, they're tracking up, you know, approaching ninety percent, you know, uh, I see eighty-seven point six percent don't think that your service is excellent. So where does the full response come? Uh, it's eighty-seven point six, we believe it's excellent.
Yes, so I got, I got twelve point four percent that don't think it's excellent. And three hundred and seventy-one work orders every week, those two numbers are important. Now, I'm not the greatest personnel, but, okay, but what I can do through stage is I can give a half.
So at least we keep, you know, the comments.
That's the way the comments are drawn. Now, what we did based on this report, I believe it was back in September, October, November, we found out to a training for a work order system, there is a survey that would automatically generate by every work order that we completed. It's automatically, you know, most we completed. Surveys, which we came from very basic, went along with the lines of our survey, and it's, we asked that the person that requests the item, they get that email due to results or due to survey. We had some successes, granting sure the overall number of surveys, so they part our monthly meetings with admin staff, they're asking them, please put them on that survey. This is a tool in our toolbox to help us service people, and we're working towards that. Somebody sees that the person puts a work order in, doesn't know if he thinks I'm lying in the back, so we've asked, okay, do we understand that? So that person who asked you to put that work order in, asked them if they're happy with our service, so it kind of brought us the whole communication across, everybody across the board. And it's, it's a goal we're working on, and it's getting better.
So, so what that tells me is, I believe that your system that accesses all the results doesn't send the first group out the results to the person who did the work in, is that a fair statement?
That is correct. Not all teachers have access to the work order system, the designated, each principal has a designated person in their facility that all work orders come from them and they put them in. So we've got their train, we're moving in the right information, correct information, so we can have that goal, if it was done within the last five minutes. We don't want everybody to put in, yeah, crazy work.
It goes back to my point, the leadership is a, a jury that will respond to the two weeks, and we, we were in a restaurant here tonight, and we walked out, and we were deep in, and we said, why are you doing that? And we went down and said, why are you still there? Why are you telling the teacher that they're the one who's doing this? So what we expect, if we finish, we expect to see great results here, if you're passionate.
How do you think, so we take the talk, because we clarify, you guys feel like you're getting better feedback? Absolutely, absolutely. So, yes, we need to work on, this is, so the system is set up, so there's a bunch of different kinds of statistics, I think, you've got two hundred and sixty staff, not two hundred and sixty, you can put in more workers, because they can be fearless, they can do a lot of practice, so it goes to one point that verifies the validity of the work order, and then that person gives them consistent information, work orders have enough information to go fix the problem. Problem is, is that person, survey, and that person's going to have to do a better job of going to teacher two oh five, the same day, do a good job of soldering, otherwise you don't get as good feedback.
And if we haven't reached out to post it all, and then I'm a chairman of the board, if you don't know, you should, if you could put email, she sends you an email. Communication, we're just something to do, and, and all, and I think, and believe we were in the right direction, and I hope next time we can work with everybody else.
You could also probably, I know that this is a different survey issue, you should also probably compile some of the feedback that you got about this support work, is we're completing, and there's three hundred and seventy per week, I'm sure you could pull a hundred of your comments about quality of the work, right? So you could also do that next time, so there's a good, a good perspective on the quality of the service. Thanks for doing that.
One person from campus, uh, depends on campus.
Well, yes, to use Mr. Scott's analogy, I believe a high school which may have three that have the ability to submit work orders, three or less than that, most campuses, the principal, secretary, and...
Thank you. Thank you. So. I need consolidated federal grant application, you will have to review it. Sir, trust me, this is a notice, sort of a board review that as session requires, we are federally titled, program application handled, and we may be ready, but we, no difference, this year's T E A has consolidated all of your these applications into one, now it's called the twenty-fourth grant, consolidated grant application, and that, those are, those are federal, so IDA, partly title, one to eighty-four dollars. And the requirement for those is always that we should teach them to utilize those funding sources to enrich, add, enhance, and increase opportunities for bettering the students type of community, and not necessarily, um, local resources to add for those in, so we'll submit that application July one, by July one, and a copy of that will be available for review publicly. And so. I've got a brief of board policy, D P C, global compensation, we've entered a few matches. Trust me, this is from start seventy-one, fifty-seven, this is the first meeting for the board to review board policy, D P C, global, and just to highlight a couple of changes, it's a very important policy consideration here, referred to by this first earlier. But on page sixty-eight, we see the first change we're proposing, and that is something that's actually been operationalized the last twenty years already before approval. That is that every employee who's a full-time employee in the district, whether a paraprofessional or professional, gets five locals to pay in addition to the same pay. And so there's no, no classification of employee to district, in that regard, here in Central, that's the local C bar staff, but we've noticed that that change wasn't made in the local policy, so that addition and, and others is an accurate consideration. And then if you'll move to page seventy-one at the bottom, you'll see that it's referring to buyback, that timer is the start of that. In the, in the past, my gosh, this is twenty years, and longer than that, what has historically happened is when employees retired, if they had any local C leave approved, the district would buy that back up to sixty-five days, at a rate of seventy-five dollars. And when we looked at that, we thought that was pretty good, we knew we had addressed it a long time, we did a little market research, we found out that we were mainly off the line when it comes to operability issues in the area, my cars. And so after doing that research, we're bringing a proposal to provide locally buyback options for those who retired, up to one hundred days, up to seventy-five. And if they're a professional employee, we're asking them, we pay the certified subrate, and in fact, there's also a subtle change, you have the actual policy, our capital, because that was one deletion, which you see, was one being left out from what you're looking at in the electronic packet. So if you'll go to that same page, across about forty-three, we have the same schedule. So you'll see that the teachers, administrators, professional employees should pay locally up to one hundred days, a degree teacher substitute rate, but also have paraprofessional employees. On page ten, as well, this one, to our, and afterwards, as locally, teacher administrators, professionals pay locally up to one hundred days, at a degree teacher substitute rate. Paraprofessionals auxiliary staff can be paid locally up to one hundred days as well, at the paraprofessional substitute rate, and that could, but in addition to that, we found it's very common for additions like ours to also buyback, so same. And so what we're proposing is that teachers, administrators, and professionals can be paid half, at a rate of half the degree teacher, they'd be rated, per day, must take sixty up to a total amount of three thousand dollars. If you're prepared for paraprofessional auxiliary employees who have been with the district this long, so our stay leave is, they qualify, they live with the district, they're these years, locally, they're not, not for supervision, they're above the level, they qualify, they're this one. So again, if you've been there ten years, and you're a teacher, administrator, professional, you're on stay leave, you get that qual back, at half the rate of subpay, certified subpay, and up to a total amount of three thousand dollars. Paraprofessional auxiliary, half the rate, paraprofessional substitute, up to a total amount of fifteen hundred dollars. So addition, the locally buyback, up to one hundred days, substitute rate, you could also get a stay leave qual back. And we believe that that is a great benefit, measured by market, of the issues like ours popular employees, we also believe the incentive for employees to save their leave, as opposed to using, is not uncommon for employees to use five C and five O a year, as they have to. This incentive and there's a place, we believe that any employees could be a little more, use a little of this expression. Five local a year and five stay. And three, right, the stay with the district, this is, if they were ever to leave, the Central, if they were retired, they would lose locally, they're state, they're higher than the Central, they qualify, they're in locally, they have the conditions, just other, and if they've been there ten years or more, retired from the Central, they also qualify for the places there, uh, stay. And so this is the rap, especially to take a little bit of details there, you know, giving some feedback over the next month, if you have a question, we'll give clarification for you, and we'll bring this back to you next month for your consideration. All right, so we gave construction update. The construction update is in your electronic packet on page seventy-six, and this time, Mr. Scott, we provide a brief overview, now there's no presentation this time, because it hasn't changed much from last time, actually, most of the various planning costs. I did see the camera, so.
Yes, board members, there are our photos, right, that's probably for all of us. There's, uh, basically, it's very, uh, tour. The page four, the bulk of the work page today is right now, it's all through the, the divisions for renovations and harmony, uh, Con Valley, it's a lot of it, St. Clair. All of page fours complete, and then in page five, which is the final page, and what we'll, they made really good start on that, thanks to the cooperation of the campuses and law, they've been scenarios prior to what we have, so they really got a good night on Sunday, progress. Unless something unusual happens, we'll, we should have D S P prior to school starting, we'll, we'll teach you feedback at all the campuses. John Lynn is completed, as far as this sort of page is, there's still some, uh, oddness that they're having to do on landscaping, we're still trying to fix the thing, uh, pull the bar out there in time of the rain, I believe they first, the product, they, they are now, Snakes were there yesterday, we'll wind up, we'll talk to this, we'll get, uh, we are in the process of taking names of the marquees, as, as auto-gonkling, C P C and South Campus, the, apparently, they're... Uh, the, uh, very, uh, they work, continues to be addressed, and, uh, we have to continue to, uh, keep it up, uh, to go along with this time. We're very close, and we're, uh, in that condition, uh, and, uh, all the way here. Now, we're gonna get them, I'm, I'm, we've gone through, we've worked with them, uh, and so, the next step is to give them, uh, getting accurate, updated work that we'll add, and, uh, and do, do give them any, we do the content that they're completely, we can change, and I think that's how we're gonna, or, uh...
Is the normal presentation, uh, the, 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 the,[763.12]
I'd like for, um, I need to go to the staff and look at what we have for either August 22nd or 29th. I'd like to do a review of the school commissioners' intentions following the fourth session on those two project uh, for the fourth and fifth session. So, um, if we could make sure that there's a little amount of industry coming up in those two nights. The second was we're going to work on that. Um, and I know that's a little after the traditional sort of school but maybe some activities from all of the teachers. Okay, um, want you, uh, item eight, correction agenda, item eight, 2019, 2020 district annual results measures. Trustees, this time I'll call Jonathan Holbert up. He's our director of Sassy School Transformation and School Improvement and Transformation. How about Jesus? His record, uh, complicated, his position, his position. Last year, he was speaking sexy. I'm just trying to be so much more proper as you know. But the title is pretty fantastic and it fits. So, so trustees, if you were part of the goal setting workshop, you staff sometimes kind of talk about all of the different improvement frameworks that we use that are either required by all things that we know, like community-based kind of systems, you really want to try to improve the decision. But in the past, we've done all those things compared to all processes and systems. We had to have teams around and they weren't all talking to each other. And so we made a very simple effort to align all of those together into one continuous, uh, improvement process. And so the result of that at district levels, we, we went through that process and created some annual, uh, results measures that are high level that we believe now departments in Kansas who are also in this network can do it, can develop annual results measures that are on individuals. And so you'll see that common thread from board level all the way down to department campus levels. So everybody's, you know, working really hard to really, and there he is, the board's the same board, the same annual results board. And so it's certain quarters will apply, you know, via the board.
You mean, it's driving someone using the board, you thought you could do it, speed up and I was gonna work on the and results measures, um, I, uh, I was gonna say, she's not worth everything I have to say.
No, that's not true.
I thought it was a couple of years, a couple of years in, that is, uh, well, it's just one story. Uh, direct your attention back over. Um, these are two things that we previously talked about, but I think that they kind of bring them up. Um, we did a big goal cascade, I think last time we talked about this. The idea here is that, um, your goals that we set for the district cascade down into the departments, so the business office and the construction department, all the offices, and then goes down through all their subgroups and then down to the staff department. So the goals that we're talking about here, the results measures associated, um, are, are very clearly, um, completely written in this that we're applying, um, that each of those subgroups that set goals are appropriately aligned to that sense. And so they're a little, little different, um, than, than you did item prior to this. The second thing I'd like to draw attention to was this slide here, the solve, where we look at different systems and problem I can do. So, um, we do have, um, some of the scalability, um, we have the effective school framework, and of course, our community-based kind of system, um, is, is only easier than I think we look at most of it in for results, because actually pay for things that haven't been settled before, um, um, which are, so, um, yes. Um, the, the idea here is that, um, the system lives on one thing, right? Um, it's not going to be three, the solid or ignoring, but, um, previously, you, uh, you know, each of these systems, uh, they could create redundancies and inefficiencies, uh, instead of wanting to bring it to one, one system or just to, um, and so, um, I think there are some little things that I already talked about, I mentioned before. So that first goal, um, is about, um, value reputation, if I keep it correctly, of finding, um, this type of system. Um, we did, I'm not an optimist, we staff, um, asking for this kind of system. And then, uh, the future that there should be, departments, this one, community based kind of system, and, uh, the budget cost, and for finding this, this, this. So while you look at everything combined, those four, four priorities online, um, you see that, uh, you won't find any star balls in the university lines, or, or, let's say, not very, not very, um, uh, district level, but you see, uh, it's a work community centered right now. And so, um, we're pushing the question.
Annual results measures, they're listed for you in the, in that chart, I think, page seven. Mr. Holbert, you referred several of those as the, as, which you can see on the quarter, which are right here, which are, uh, she's, uh, quarter, all of the different, uh, things, this, this.
This is the professional target range, right?
That's the first goal for the year, is, um, I don't really exactly know what the topic, and I, um, I know that, um, that the personnel has, um, to implement, it's, it's happy to hear all of that.
And that's like for all staff, all professional staff, all, 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 all.
Yeah, we originally, uh, we used, um, which we, uh, that's, uh, based on, uh, maybe, maybe say, uh, I don't understand the process. So we changed, uh, how we do this.
That was the cascade, we do the departments, I was only like, this supposed to be something, uh, certainly, so.
So, uh, recommendation process. Mister President, I recommend board approval of the district annual results measures in 2019, 2020, this year. Reclamation point two, ten, to accept the district annual results measures, which present, sure, I'm telling you, uh, most of our district areas, uh, since, uh, I have a sense of, uh, the party, any questions? Any comments? If not, I'll, I, I'll vote, motion period. I'd be a component of the record to the East Central School Foundation. Trustees, uh, we have a recommendation for you to return to appoint Robyn Nastyville to the East Central School Foundation. She's a, without, without, this, Nastyville, she's a recent freshman graduate, class of nineteen eighty-two. She's lived in the district for about seventeen years, um, with her husband and two college students. Check, that, uh, Robin served as the assistant vice president of the building back in Kansas City Series, so in twenty twenty, same twenty, twenty, two thousand and one, for position of USA as senior marketing manager and investment management company in USA. Twenty seventeen, she decided to separate the USA and join her husband, full-time, in support of managing the management operations of the company, as to where she works, and the company's there, and she's at the four and six. Outside of Robin's professional responsibilities, she's a member of Impact San Antonio, as the member plus member of the assistant each year, fundraising for five hundred thousand dollars, perhaps, to promote and deserve not, not for profit organization. Uh, she carries with tremendous pride, uh, because of her long-term career, and has served foundations as the all-competitive stewardess of the high school. Any questions?
I asked you a question, so.
He's six.
Yes, sir, Mister President, I recommend board approval of Robin Nastyville, to a three-year term as a director of the East Central School Foundation. I have a recommendation from the superintendent to appoint Robin Nastyville to a three-year term as director of the East Central, uh, East Central School Foundation. Do I retain motion? Hold on. Motion, my, for large, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second? All right. Mister President? I'm sorry, you are. On the paper, I, I'll vote, motion period. Thank you very much. And welcome, uh, to a different position within the foundation, if you would, uh, I, I would say, both of the four, better services, supplies. Trustee, I wanted to read this item and such, and I know it's just somewhat related, uh, to your, and I can consider it. Um, several months ago, uh, Mr. Morgan and his team, uh, began researching, uh, how, uh, efficiently we were using our, uh, district departments, and how efficiently we've been using our printers across the district. And in working with, uh, companies who provide copyer services and products over the years, we found that to be a very difficult one. And as a result, we decided to, after exploring options with an efficiency scenario, we decided to engage in consulting company called, um, Enough Hoppings, uh, and their primary function is to optimize the unit to, to the school, which is using copiers and printers. Uh, we had an assessment done, utilization assessment, as well as a condition assessment, as well as a, um, uh, how appropriate was the equipment for the demand and the load on that. There were many factors. Uh, for example, um, we identified that we were making a lot of us at a little bit higher rate than we expected, and we were printing printers more frequently than we otherwise, uh, should, under efficiency. And we also found that we had copiers in some areas that were over-equipped, and there were jet engines when we needed hoppers. In other cases, we had hoppers when we needed jet engines. So strategically putting the right equipment in the right place is my aspect of what they provided. Uh, but maybe more important than that is they helped us create an R and P to build a market, and the confidence of R and P is to secure, uh, partnership with a company, uh, that will, A, provide the best value, the best quality equipment for the district, uh, but B, um, provide oversight and accountability for the service and equipment. Uh, what we never had before is that it's a service to be, that we can provide on, we can effectively monitor, uh, uh, hoppings on, also accountable for the service, so that you get full access, and you can see how the equipment, the, the name is done, as well as responsibility for the equipment, so that it's not down, uh, accessible to the staff, before it runs on. And then thirdly, the other thing that they offer is, uh, software called Paper Cut, which allows for, for first time in our school, which we have the ability to track the number of copies and the number of papers printed, uh, printers. And so based on utilization of copies, and based on the amount of printing, we can do, using that same number of copies and same number of papers being printed, um, they, uh, put out an R and P for pricing for copier, copyer service, and, um, Paper Cut software, uh, and, and as well as, this particular item, the same software Paper Cut on our printers, and servicing of our printers, and the service of our printers also includes, so, all of the toner and that sort of thing. So I talked about both items, and what, and now bring the part. So this first item is just about the printers. And, and currently, we spend a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year on equipment, equipment service and equipment replacement. Currently, printers have an issue, put a text in it, or a text has to go, and try to fix it, try to repair it, or determine that it's not cost-effective to repair and how to replace it. The other thing that we do is we have budget allocations for supplies for printers, and every school campus applies their own toner. And there are challenges to that, because, um, there's no guarantee that you're using the appropriate toner for the equipment. Sometimes aftermarket toners reduce the life, so I can see the problem. Sometimes they don't. Um, in addition to that, sometimes they give good pricing on toner, and they'll hide in bulk, and then the printer breaks, and the same model doesn't use the same toner, and you have a toner story. And so it's very efficient. And so this service then provides service for the printers, and provides all of the toner that we need. And our recommendation, if you look at the tab, the tabulation on page eighty-three, um, is that we go with both the printers, service, and supplies, we'd be recommending the annual. And if you look at the bar graph, if you go to the bottom of the page, you'll see the very bottom bar, the largest bar, that's what we currently pay just for supplies, I mean, printers, printer service, about a hundred thousand a year. With day bill, we would be providing all of the supplies, as well as the service, for forty-three thousand, four seventy-one. And we chose that particular option because they would be providing both aftermarket or, or tanks, and O E M, or, or, uh, a right toner is for the equipment, as opposed to, so they would know which, which you can use the, the O E M, and it'd be good, and which equipment can handle a third-party aftermarket, uh, toner and be good, uh, when we currently don't, um, manage. So, all in all, what that means is over a five-year period, we, they, if we, if we did not reduce the amount of print, which you believe in, with the Paper Cut, software, nation software, you can see a reduction in print, um, you can save the district over five years, two hundred eighty-four thousand dollars in service, uh, as well as supplies for our printers. So we think that's great value for the district. Uh, the team that came together to work on that, and we recommended that, uh, to them, and after reviewing that with them, I, I agree. So we have a question about dislocation with print services, software, and supplies.
Both. So, um, both of the four data, correct?
Yes.
So they, we, they, on, for, at all, probably, you do have the servicing, you, you, that, go.
Servicing printers that we already have and replacing them, should they.
I think what printers just aren't, is, they touch those, that we have, and, 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 and I buy in progress.
In addition to the printers, which, I'd say, our internal effort is what we do, is standardize, we, we, purchases. Their recommendations, we use this specific brand, because of reliability, um, replacement, um, um, accessibility, um, as well as they can reduce the number of toner texts, and also, we, we, right. So teams are able to give our distance, that is, we can narrow the variation of brains, and, 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 and also, it's our, we, we, it's more of an effort, printers, where there's a printer that may be under pressure, where we all just, we do, and, and, and place the, 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 so as said, the, 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 thank you, management.
Two hundred eighty-four thousand, yes, saving for the printers. It's just under sixty thousand. Seven thousand five hundred and seventy-eight savings.
Okay, and that's if we all use, use, we, 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 we're saying. Any other questions? All right, Mister President, I recommend board approval of the work of printers, services, supplies contracts, and day deal, as a, as a, and a recommendation from the superintendent to award her services, supplies contract to be paid during the day. Uh, motion by, for Nastyville, is there a second? Right? Have a second, Robyn, for large. Any other questions?
Not all, there. I, I'll vote, motion period.
Three, two, two, nine, indeed, proposals for copier, software, service, uh, so, proposals for copier, software, service, and so on. Trustees, there's a mission for, um, to follow along, sometimes on, to, to, tabulation, which we can't on page eighty-five. Uh, the same team, consisting of Mr. Morgan, Dr. Baisha, uh, Miss Barnes, Hugh Barnes, and of course, Robin Zanahan, we see, Lisa, Kimura, and Al Walker, uh, came together to avoid, evaluate all of the, uh, proposals. And there were several submitted, and one of the things that we learned from Robin Zanahan is that there's a huge relationship to, um, having the hardware, uh, and service aspect of this, go to the same company that has the software. And so there were several companies that had the ability and are proposing to, to provide both, so you wouldn't have, you know, Toshiba, you know, you know, the copiers, and then, you know, another company, Toshiba, you know, the software. So, best case there, we, all right, so we, we look at the tabulations, um, score tabulation on page eighty-six, you see the top two of Toshiba Business Solutions, uh, in day bill, and the differentiated Toshiba Business Solutions offered both the software, as well as the printer, hardware and service, and day bill, um, did not, correct the statement. So the, aside from the fact that the total score ranked in one, um, the recommendation of Robin Zanahan is, best case scenario, to have Toshiba Business Solutions, uh, be one of them. So, on page eighty-seven, we'll see the results and cost savings, and again, um, this is if the same number of copies continue to increase, which what, if behavior changes, and we reduce the number of copies, it would be greater savings. The annual savings based on what we currently spend, um, to put the writing within the right places, servicing, whether the mechanics keep running, the service in, in a timely manner, uh, and then track the utilization, so there would be an allocation in print, directors of departments, as well as presidents, we can, to have based on their usage, where they can allocate the number of print out, prints, which you go to employees or departments, based on what they think they do. Going back to printers, which just improve their capability for an employee to keep to their personal, instead of printing directly in the moment, their printer, they can have several print jobs on cue, and when they had an opportunity, they can go to a, a copier, put in their code, and they can print to the copier, which is a lot less expensive to do than print. Um, and so there's, there's a lot of features like that, but most important, we can track that, monitor that, and adjust this that real time. So hopefully, the behavior changes, I, I would point a lot of this, um, to what we've done for several years in energy management, of putting some tools in place, monitor more effectively, and hopefully change the behaviors, and we don't produce, uh, the quality of service, and the ability for teachers to have what they need, it will be optimized as you will, um, the resource that you're allocated and bring to both copies and printers, so you can get the best value. So it's about a ninety-two thousand dollar a year savings, if nothing changes in terms of quantity, just by entering into this relationship, and over a sixty month to five-year, uh, period, saving the district four hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars. So if we look at, uh, both of these programs, really, you know, about three quarters of a day dollars, getting behavior change that you are on it, um, we believe we can get a lot better service, a lot better equipment, uh, we'll be able to monitor the utilization, a lot better, hopefully, we can change behaviors, and see more savings over the course of the time. Um, this all includes Robin Zanahan's statement on board with us, uh, annually to hold our vendors, kind of, to monitor, uh, for the quality of service, responsibility, for, for writing, uh, for, uh, you have any extra questions? Anything else about that? All right, trustees, I recommend board approval to board the copier, service, and supply contracts, as well as the software contracts, to, to Toshiba Business Solutions, as, 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 and, 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 and. I recommend there's a superintendent for this contract, too, to, to, this, this, so, 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 have a motion, my, for large, is there a second? I would say, I'm, for you. Any other questions? Your board, as I said, we knocked back there, so maybe you say, we, we, back to our, to, 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 to.
I saw this channel, it's not all, because, 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 nothing beyond other business that's more closely associated, associated with the student, too. So that's, that's sort of a plus, so I'm not sure how you can factor that, as we start, uh, towards that, by, uh, but certainly, that would be first, about, we, 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 we.
All right, but the recommendation for the superintendent, and motion, and, 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 second, which is here, on the table, I, I'll vote, motion period. I, indeed, a recommendation from H U D, and Charles, I'm sure, the founder of the, 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 that last month, we had a fantastic event, uh, here in the district, where we held a press conference along with the Cassie Network, to formally announce that we will be Cassie, uh, in the fall of twenty twenty. Um, H U D and Charles, the chairman of the foundation did, offer a two-day, a, 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 a donation for startup expenses, as well as, uh, the planning of the year, uh, for the mutation purposes, and prepared, and, 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 and all, twenty twenty. The first board policy, we see, is the board can accept and give money or property in half of the district. Um, it must do so, it's valued by, 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 and, uh, I, 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 I think two million dollars is below the threshold, so we want the issue ready to, to formally consider whether we accept that tonight. Um, so again, Cassie Schools Network, um, Cassie Campus, we, 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 it's super exciting for all of us, the staff, for the, for all time, and, 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 of course, um, this career thing, campus, it's going to cast its leadership and management opportunities, and what is a fourteen point nine million dollar issue in the fall of, um, it's going to focus on leadership and management, ask us, please, uh, ask, tell you, towards the, the Congress, um, and there's a growing number of industry partners, uh, jumping on board, we are awesome, and, 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 looking for that, and, and things. So, yeah, can I answer any questions? Any questions? Mister President, trustees, I recommend board approval of the donation of two million dollars to H U D and Charles, the chairman of the foundation. Uh, recommendation from the superintendent, which is, uh, for, for, for information, we, we should, we were talking about, for, 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 this side, they were up on this. All right, all right, there. I, I'll vote, motion period. All right, consideration, the table, which shall add a four point, that's, 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 that's. All right, I'm going to take motion to approve the consent of changes presented, have a motion, my, for Nastyville, uh, second, my, for you, chair, the, the consent of changes, including the A and N, this, this. I said, not, sure, what is, and, motion to, 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 to.
Hold on.
A motion, my, for you, and, 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 my, multiple members, we are approving the A and N, this, this.